I call the meeting to order. Welcome to the April 10, 2017, Meeting of the Gaston County Board of Education. I'd like to start with introductions. My name is Kevin Collier. I represent the Riverbend Township. To my left is the Vice Chairman, Mr. Jeff Ramsey. And I will start to my right and let the board members recognize themselves.
Mr. Dedman, Gastonia Township.
I am Dr. Guthrie. I represent the Gastonia Township.
Brewmore, Crowder Mountain Township.
And Dr. Chery, At-Large Member.
On behalf of the board, I'd like to welcome everyone here and thank you all for being here. At this time, I'm going to turn the invocation, the pledge allegiance, over to Mr. Ushery.
Heavenly Father, we come into your presence asking that you join with us tonight, lead us and guide us. Give us the wisdom that we stand in need of as we transact the business of the Gaston County Schools. We thank you for this opportunity. We thank you for watching over our students, our administrators and teachers. And we just ask, Heavenly Father, that all that we do bring glory and honor to your name. We ask this in Christ's name. Amen.
Amen.
We're Pledge of Allegiance. Our Pledge of Allegiance, unified, of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Ushery. The next item is our agenda adoption. I'd like to make one correction to the agenda. We are not going to need a closed session tonight, so if you'll strike through the closed session down at the bottom of the agenda. And with that change, I'll need a motion to adopt the agenda as amended. A motion by Mr. Dedman, second by Ms. Chery. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor show by raising your hand, and it's unanimous. Mr. Booker, good news.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Because of our configuration tonight where we're on the floor to do our budget discussion, we did not invite students or employees to be present for your meeting for recognition, but there is still a lot of good news in our district that I'd like to share with you. We had nine students earn awards during the recent North Carolina Science and Engineering Fair and the North Carolina Student Academic of Sciences Competition for their outstanding projects in biology, chemistry, environmental science and engineering. We were fortunate that the German Language Culture Foundation in Charlotte has donated $12,500 to fund a broad experience for 10 students from Ashbrook and Forestview High Schools related to the Gotha Germany Gastonia Sister City. This is a program that's been going on for a number of years, and we're fortunate that they continue to sponsor that for us. Rankin Elementary held its annual Read-a-Thon. It challenged students to raise $8,000 and see how long they could read. They not only raised $8,000, but get ready for this, they totaled more than 400,000 minutes of reading. Chapel Grove Elementary sponsored a Jump Rope for Heart fundraiser, and they collected over $2,200 for the American Heart Association. Last week was the Gaston Early College High School celebrated the National Early College Week. This observant brought attention to all the good things that are going on at the early college. At the same time, they also hosted our college fair on the last weekend as well as AP Review. So a lot of good things are going on at the Gaston Early College. And finally, this week is what week, Ms. Guthrie?
National Library Week.
It is National Library Week, and the theme is Libraries Transform, and in our school system, they do just that. We look at the library as being the heart of our schools. The library is the center for learning and also affords information and allows ideas to be shared with our minds. So we want to be sure to thank all of our librarian and media specialists this week as you visit our schools. Those are a few of the good things. I'll encourage everyone to look at the board briefs that were shared with you for many other great things that are going on in the district. Also, highlight that Mr. Hagan sends out a weekly superintendent's message as well as updating the website on Mondays that share a lot of the good things that are going on in the district. And that's our report.
Thank you, Mr. Booker. The next item is public expression. We have one person signed up to speak. Let me outline the rules of procedure. Citizens wishing to make comment and who have completed a request to speak for them will be recognized by the chair and then requested to step up to the microphone for their comments, for Mr. Hagan's is over here. Citizens will state their name and address for the record. Comments will be limited to three minutes. The members of the board do not respond to public expression during public expression. Public expression does not allow for comments on confidential or personnel matters. The chair shall rule on all points of order during public expression. And the citizen signed up to speak tonight is Amber Randolph. If you'll come to this podium over here, Ms. Randolph, can you bring your helper with you?
Yep. Yeah, back up. Thank you.
And the mic is already on. Okay.
Good evening. I'm Amber Randolph. My address is 913 Willow Wind Drive, Gastonia, North Carolina. And my helper is Aiden Randolph. He's a rising kindergartner this fall. And I'm here on behalf of the group for the Hawksnest Sibling Policy. We'd like to thank you for your time and consideration of our concerns this year. I think it's probably been about a year we've been bugging y'all. And we just thank you for collecting data around the siblings of rising kindergarteners this fall as a part of the lottery process. And we'd also like to invite you to a fundraiser that we're having on May the 12th at Hawksnest. It's a fun run. We're trying to raise $21,000 for a leveled reading library for each classroom. So all the kids are all excited and pumped up about it. We're going to have a lot of activities on the field, face painting, hair painting. We, I don't know, after the recent news about the Bouncy House, but we had planned to have one. Not sure that's a good idea anymore. And the kids are going to walk 30 laps around, or their goal is to walk 30 laps around the track down there. And they have sponsors. I think we've raised at least $3,000 so far. So I can send out a link, or it's posted on Facebook somewhere, if anybody would like to donate, or if you'd like to come out and join us, we'd love to have you. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, the next item on our agenda is the approval correction of minutes for the March 6, 2017, meeting and the March 20, 2017, meeting. Motion by Ms. Chery, second by Ms. Guthrie. Any questions? Seeing none, all those in favor show by raising your hand, and it's unanimous. Brings us to a Classroom Moment. This information item by Dr. Bocknight.
Good evening, members of the board, Chairman Collier, Superintendent Booker. Tonight I have with me Holbrook Middle School. We have had some great activity that we've talked about throughout the school year, K-12, but we're going to focus on our middle school Classroom Moment with math. I'm going to turn the program over to our Executive Director of K-12, Ms. Glennis Brooks, who will share information about the Classroom Moment from Holbrook.
Thank you, Dr. Bocknight. The instructional focus for middle school math this year is inquiry-based lessons in which the teacher acts as the facilitator instead of the traditional lecturer. Diana Baxter's sixth grade classroom is an exemplar of what this classroom could look like. She challenges groups of students with a math task and allows them to make sense of the problem, work towards a solution, and share their ideas with the class. These instructional techniques is what we focus on this year through our professional development that was offered to all of our math teachers across the district by our academic services. At this time, it is a pleasure to present Ms. Jessica Steiner, the Principal of Holbrook Middle School, and Diana Baxter, sixth grade math teacher at Holbrook Middle School.
Thank you, Ms. Brooks. It is my pleasure to actually introduce one of our exceptional teachers, Ms. Diane Baxter. She is one of our sixth grade teachers who has been teaching for 15 years. She spent most of her career as a fifth grade teacher at Lowell Elementary, but I was lucky enough to have her come to the middle this past year at Holbrook Middle. She has a master's degree and has earned her National Board Certification. She also serves as one of our pinnacle leaders in our district. Ms. Baxter has also represented Gaston County very well in twice in our national math conference. She teaches math, I promise. I just can't quite say it. But she has represented Gaston County in our state math conference twice. You will see throughout her presentation that her students are very enthusiastic about her class, and they have high levels of engagement, and that is why they excel so well in her class throughout the year. So I'm excited for you to see the snapshot that she is going to share with you and her students throughout the presentation, Ms. Baxter.
Good evening. Let me just look at this here. Okay, so the first little snapshot actually is a math lesson we did last week. One of the things I wanted to talk to you guys about is we not only follow the North Carolina State Curriculum, but our students are expected to reflect off of the SMPs, we call them the Standards for Mathematical Practice. And so as a teacher, when we're planning these lessons, we know we're following the curriculum, but also it is great to look at these eight practices to see what's incorporated every single day within our lessons. So these lessons that you're going to see, and we have a little video clip to show you, these students are doing a little bit of assessment review. So last week, I gave an assessment, and I don't like to, the next day or the day after, say, okay, number one, here's how to do number one, because half your students are engaged, and then the others that you really want to be may not be getting what you want. So I made copies of the test, and they got in groups, and they don't know at this point what they got correct and what they missed. So their goal, I like to set up the goals ahead of time, so they knew they had to work out the problems as a group, come up with their solutions, they could use their calculator, their math tools. And there's an app on the iPad, it's also on the Chromebook, it's called Spark Video. And so they have been playing with Spark Video a little bit, and so their other goal in the end is, if we have students that don't understand this concept, could you teach them this goal? And they had the opportunity, either with the Spark Video, you could either take pictures, so a lot would take a picture before, during the process, they're taking pictures, and then at the end, and then they can record what they're doing, or they record upfront the entire thing. And as a group, they decide that. They've got full run with that on how they're going to do it. One group we had, they all solved it differently, and they were like, how are we going to put in the presentation? And I'm like, well, your learners learn differently. And one of them may learn the same way as one of the students, but maybe your student learns like you do. So they decided to take pictures of each one of their work to show the many different ways it can be solved. So that's what this lesson was last week that you're seeing there. A student in my classroom would work in collaborative groups, make sense of the problems, explain their thoughts, solutions, methods, examine the multiple strategies. And one of the funny things was, a lot of our kids were going for the chorus competition last week, and I had a group of boys. They were working together, and they were coming up with the same solution, but they knew it wasn't the right solution. And one of the boys even says, I wish Journey was here. And I'm like, why do you want Journey to be here? And he says, because she thinks differently. And that said it all. They recognize each other as that, and they don't have to be the top student. And that's not what this is all about. It's about them growing. And so they use those multiple strategies and the technology piece. And with the technology, it's not about adding on, it's how we can get it within the lessons. And kids will pick that up. They'll do it all, and they'll show the teacher what they can do with that. And so the teacher's actions to make all of this successful is to move throughout the room and facilitate. And this is key in teaching and clarifying their thinking, asking the questions. When I'm going around the room, and we'll see it in the video, I like to just listen to them, because this is where I can see where their misconceptions are. Let them talk it out. They get into that constructive arguments, where sometimes they get frustrated with one another, but they can explain why. And then that's, so I don't need to be a part of that. I step back to kind of listen to that, and then I could ask the questions to get their thinking deeper in that. So, okay, so they're going to mute the sound, and I'm going to kind of talk through what they're doing here. So this is my classroom, and so they're working in groups, and my job is to come around and make sure they're on task. And one of the things with the technology piece, I thought, not only is it a learning aid for other students, I can go back and watch this, and I can make sure everyone is on task. Because if they start talking about something else during the math lesson, it will be clear on their recordings. And this is practice. I have to say, at the beginning of the year, if a teacher wants to do centers, it is not something you decide one day and do it the very next day. It's a lot of modeling and a lot of practice. And I have different level of students, and one thing I like to do is, at the beginning of the year, they do exit tickets, so I can see who's comfortable, who feels distinguished or proficient. We actually do that. And our distinguished students will be maybe the leaders for the group, because I feel that they have a grasp of the concept. So I set those up and set the rules on, as a leader, you make sure everyone's on task. They come see me personally if someone is not. So you're just setting that up. So they are doing their step by step, and they know, they don't ask me if the question's right or not. So they have to prove it themselves, support it with their reasoning and their strategies. So like in this case right here, I waited until the recording was done. So what those two girls were doing, they recorded, and then they listened through it to see if what they were actually saying made sense, and then I could propose the questions. One of the things that I always like to know is, how do they approach a question? Because our struggling students, they see a question, and a lot of times, they do not know how to even start it. So I like to keep asking that, how did you approach this? What were some key things that you wanted to look at? And just to hear them explain, that lets me know that they have a good understanding of the math, and they can talk to others. And so that's what we've been working on all year. They love it. They ask me every day if we're doing small groups. I know if I say in any moment, just get in small groups and do this, I don't have any doubt that they're going to do what they need to do. And they know as a group that they need to be on task and doing it, because it's reflective of the whole group. Adding the technology piece, even the kids that may be a little more shy, they're the ones that usually volunteer to hold it or to even give the task. So that's our moment that you see right here. And then one of the last things is, I just ask them, why do you like math class? And they think it's fun, and they don't realize they're doing a ton, a ton of work that is like the DOK3s. It's harder and harder, but you have to just make it enjoyable. They love that. One of my students, she's like, you show us how to do the math and not tell us. But that's what I expect from them, to be showing each other. They love teaching each other. And so, thank you.
Any comments from Ms. Baxter or Holbrook?
First of all, I want to say that I am just thrilled to see that there are students in our district that love math. And I like the way you serve as facilitator. Is this the best practice, that's practiced throughout the district? Have you shared this with other? You said sixth grade, right?
Yes.
Is this something that's been shared throughout? I like the procedure that you use in the classroom, and also you gave the responsibility of success or experiencing success to each and every group. Where the child was shy, he or she had a job to do, which made them feel like they were a part of the team. And that's so important when you're doing something like that. And also with the immersion of technology and being that you are a pinnacle leader, you would know how to do that and do it well to excite our children and use them more than one resource to enhance learning. I certainly like your procedure, but again, I want to ask you, is this something that's shared throughout the district, or is this just a best practice that's been done at Holbrook? I just love it. Math, yes.
Right. Well, a lot of the technology pieces are instructional technology facilitators work with teachers across the district, and it's about building capacity with teachers. One of the things, now that we have a consistent math resource in middle school, we're able to provide some additional pieces that are standard across the district. So this is something that we hope to continue to move across the system. One of the things that Ms. Baxter talked about is small group instruction, and that is a professional development opportunity that we're working on in middle schools. But the great thing is that she's come from elementary school, where they do that quite often. In fact, she was the teacher at Lowell that put a bunch of kids on a bus, because they all had science projects for our science fair last year. So not only did Holbrook get her, Lowell was very upset about that, because she's also a great science teacher as well. So she brings that inquiry base from science to our math in sixth grade.
And one other thing that I dearly love, you said, if you want to do this, you can't do it right away. I'm paraphrasing what you said. But I like that, just in case another teacher wanted to do that or to implement that, it's something that you work at or work toward, and you gain the confidence of your students and assign responsibility to them. I like that. Good job, I think.
If I understood you correctly, you alluded to the fact that you have a diverse class. So I'm just curious, do you have trouble keeping on a pace for the diversity? You had mentioned that your higher students, they end up being the leaders.
Yes, so even with my struggling math, I have a class where not a single student's proficient. Well, they weren't at the beginning of the year. Let me rephrase that. And if I have six groups for the day to keep them small, I'll have a meeting with the leaders before they would go out. And so it might just be with that group, we're just going to work on three questions. That way, they're not overwhelmed. We have, through our math adoption, they've got steps on how to approach a question. So I have those posted, and they can go back and say, we need to read the question. And the leader would guide that. And so a lot of times, because if you have behavior problems too, that's why the leader would just come see me, and I would address that. So if it's a day that I'm facilitating walking around, but it's also a day that I may have groups, and they're rotating so that I can see every single group. And so the leaders know, the kids know my expectations and what the goals are by the end, and that's important. So if they know, hey, by the time it's nine o'clock, you've got to have these three problems done with the work shown. But at the beginning of the year, it was, we're going to do all this together, and I'm going to show you how we're going to do these groups. And if I have kids that can't work together, they're not in the same group. But yeah, all different levels, but it's practice, a lot of practice.
I think the quote that the one child said, that she's not telling us. I think that says it all, because you're engaging them, and we always learn when we're a part of it. So I think it's great. Thank you.
I hope you all will reflect on some of the words that she used as she was making her presentation, because several of you served on our task force with the business leaders and what they were looking for from our students. She set goals at the beginning of the class and established what, looking for them to solve problems as a group, to be collaborative in their groups using multiple strategies to provide leadership within the groups. As Ms. Guthrie pointed out, responsibility was shared throughout the group to different people's skill sets. And then she served as a facilitator, offering clarifying questions and modeling the practice. I think that's what a lot of what we heard them asking for us, for our students to be engaged in. And so I commend you for incorporating that along with the mathematics.
And the one more piece was, in addition to the North Carolina Standard Course of Study, you did use another reference.
Any more questions or comments? Thank you very much. Thank you for coming tonight. The next item on our agenda is Latin Honors. Dr. Bocknight.
Yes, sir, and I'll invite Mr. Montgomery, our Executive Director of K-12 Instruction, to come up. At our last board meeting, we talked about Latin Honors and had lots of questions from board members, so we are bringing this item back to the full board with follow-up to the questions that were raised. Mr. Montgomery's done some additional research, so he'll walk us through some of those questions and answers at this time. Mr. Montgomery.
Thank you, Dr. Bocknight, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Superintendent. It is our pleasure again to once again bring you some information concerning Latin Honors, the valedictorian and salutatory in process, as we want to make sure we do what's best and right for our students at our graduation ceremonies. I would remind you, there's two slides that I would like to just simply just recall your memory on, what is currently in practice for our memory on, what is currently in practice for our juniors and seniors versus what's coming for next year's juniors as we move forward with state recommendations to change the way to make them common. On the left is what's currently in place for every group but our ninth and 10th graders. And then beginning with current sophomores and beyond, on the right is what you see there. We gave you an example of a schedule of a student under current practice versus what the future practice will hold. I'd remind you, in the bottom right of each of the tables, that student would earn a 5.0 under current standards, under the new standards, it would be a 4.5. So what we're talking about is simply just bringing the weights for AP to the same schedule as CCP. Let's talk about some fundamental aspects of this. Valedictorian and salutatorian have very simple definitions. It is simply the designation at the graduation ceremony of the highest ranked single student in the senior class versus the second highest GPA in the graduating senior class. That is what we currently have in practice. If you look at the last three years, you can see in this chart here, how many total number of speakers that we've had, including valedictorians and salutatorians. And I would remind you that very few ceremonies actually have one valedictorian and one salutatorian. And this simply codifies in numerical format, those facts from 14, 15, and this past school year. If you look at this, the definition of Latin honors, our school system is one of the few in the state of North Carolina that has had Latin honors for years and years and years. So this may not be new to us, but it is new across the state. So as many districts move away from valedictorian and salutatorian designations, they are adopting the Latin honors, which Gaston County Schools has had for a long time. In simplistic form, cum laude is simply with praise. And you can see the range of the weighted GPA that we designate for Gaston County Schools. Magna cum laude is the next highest with great praise, and then the highest at summa, with, with highest praise at 4.3 plus on the weighted scale. What do we currently consider for recognition? It is important to understand, Gaston County Schools, if you do a comparison chart of what we offer our students versus everyone else, we are second to none. We offer our students a large amount of recognition at our ceremonies, from the cords that they have, to the designations, to the speakers that we have. And we consider the totality of what's being recognized at our ceremonies, including, we use weighted, most districts don't use weighted, but we use weighted and unweighted. That's important because we want students who are challenging themselves with honors level, CCP level, and advanced placement level courses to be recognized as such. Many districts do not even do that much. We also want obviously what's best and right, fairness and consistency for all students. We also want our schools to be able to maintain traditions in their communities. So we offer a degree of personalized graduation ceremonies. And then of course, we want to be consistent within reason for what other districts in North Carolina are doing. As of last month, I polled our principals for who speaks at graduation ceremonies. And it is a large variety, as we all know. Superintendent speaks at some of them. We also have the principal or assistant principal, teacher, alumni speaker in some cases. Scholarship presenters are allowed to speak at some, valedictorian, salutatorian, senior class president, student body president, student representative, community members. Then at the early college, the college president, Dr. Skinner, speaks at that ceremony as well. What's important to note is, not a single school has all of these, including valedictorian and salutatorian, at their graduation ceremonies. So while we want to have a box, so to speak, that box is very flexible to allow individual schools to maintain their traditions at their school site, which is very important. How do other school districts and universities recognize valedictorians and salutatorians? Many, many are doing exactly what we are doing. They're trying to find a way to manage the ceremonies themselves, given the fact that everyone is anticipating having a large number of valedictorians tied at the end of their senior school year. Many have already moved away from this or are currently doing what we are doing, and that's exploring what are the best options for your district moving forward. Most universities no longer recognize a valedictorian at graduation ceremonies. Based on your last, the colleges that you threw at us last month, we have East Carolina, Davidson, Appalachian State, University of North Carolina at Chapel Hill, University of North Carolina at Wilmington, Western Carolina University. None of those recognize valedictorians, not a one. The only one on the list that people share with us last month is NC State. And they do theirs, you know, the very large. So they have colleges that have that and they recognize the valedictorian within each college's graduation. So this is not a movement that is specific to the public schools of North Carolina. Colleges and universities also are in this with us. What changes would be there in rec, or excuse me, what changes would there be in recognition considerations? We want to find a way to make sure our students are rewarded and recognized for their hard work. That's what we are striving for. We are simply trying to find a way to manage the graduation ceremony itself with respect to multiple, multiple, multiple valedictorians and salutatorians. Moving forward, I think what we are confident that we can do together is to bring a recommendation for how best to do that in an upcoming board member. So with that, we'll be glad to answer any questions.
Mr. Montgomery, what's the recommendation date? What's, what are the dates again of implementing it at the year?
It's current sophomores. So the recommendation is when they graduate, class of 2019.
Okay. Questions or comments?
Yes, sir. Personally, I think this is a great idea. And I think it'll, it'll, it'll help us get in line with what the rest of the state is doing. And I like the idea of grouping them all together, of the Latin thing, of just calling, you know, those people that have above that average. My only question would be, and I'm going to let the high school principals, because they are really, really smart people, figure out who, who will speak at graduation. Because there will be some, I can offer you a suggestion. At Highland, because I'm familiar with that, I had the students, I went to a college graduation about six or seven years ago. And the speaker at the college graduation was elected to speak by the seniors, the students at that college. And I, we implemented that at Highland. So I, I don't know what everybody else does, but that's a really good thing. But that was, the only problem I see, Mr. Montgomery, is determining who will get an opportunity to speak at those graduations. But I like the direction you're taking. And I hope that you'll have a recommendation for us at our next meeting or two, so we can let those sophomores in the county know and those parents. Have we involved parents in some of this too, Mr. Montgomery?
Dr. Balknight? One of the things that we have scheduled, the superintendent's next Student Advisory Council meeting, because we felt like that would be the group. That is the, the main part of the agenda to talk with them about in May, prior to the board meeting, to get their feedback as well. Mr. Montgomery has talked with the school administration and school counselors on several occasions, and so we felt the next group to talk with would be students.
Thank you. I do think this is the way to go, board, I really do.
Mr. Montgomery, I think, you mentioned the box. This new procedure certainly would be a box without walls. And I think, having attended many of the ceremonies myself, I do believe strongly that our students are given adequate recognition. And I like the idea of you bringing it to the students as well, to get feedback from them. But I just see that our children are rewarded and recognized for their academic achievement. And when you mention maintain tradition in the communities, that's the respect that you've given to this, and I, I certainly appreciate that as you consider.
Any other questions or comments? With none, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Montgomery. The next agenda item is math resources. This is an action item. Dr. Balknight?
Yes, sir, I have Ms. Brooks who will share with me about our two math resources. The two math resources that we currently use in elementary and middle school, in our middle schools are math investigations in our elementary schools and Ready Math in our middle schools. And both of the resources support the inquiry-based instruction that we are working really hard to implement and improve in our district. So Pearson is the vendor that we use for math investigations. We would just like to continue the use of the resources. They serve 14,844 K5 students. And the cost of the resources, which are both print and digital, is $716,193.08. Our middle school resource, the vendor, is Curriculum Associates. And we serve 6,958 6'8" students. And the cost of the resource, which again is both print and digital, is $387,757.05. Both of the resources are consumable. The students get student books to work in the classroom, as well as a take-home student resource book in which they can do their homework or work on additional problems, and also the parents can help them. So every year, the consumables, because the students write in the books, we purchase the books again in the next school year. And there's a digital component to both of the resources, which provides lessons, additional problems for students to, to work. Also, there are assessments that the teachers can use to assess how well the students have grasped the skills that they have taught. And the students can, at the elementary level, can utilize the digital from home. The middle school, at the middle school level, we have a diagnostic that we give two times during the course of the year. And also with the diagnostic data, we use that data to look at how well the students are doing. And we also group our students according to their skill level.
Any questions about this action item?
And I would add, members of the board, this is a budgeted, planned expenditure. We're just allowing you to know how we're expending these dollars that are allocated to our resources for textbooks and other educational materials in the district.
Four, I'm sorry, 14,844, 14,844.
And our instruction committee will recall that this past year was our first year that we had a consistent math resource at the middle school. And so one of the things that we're proud of is that now that our family's K8 have the continuity of the inquiry-based math support and instruction in the school and at home, and they're able to take materials home to work with as a family.
Go ahead.
Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we give a, my conversation to go ahead.
Thank you, Ms. Chair. A motion by Ms. Chair, a second by Ms. Guthrie. Any more questions or comments? With none, if you'll show by raising your hand for support. And that's unanimous. Okay. Thank you, Dr. Balknight. All right, the next item is the presentation to 2017, 2018 Superintendent's Budget Request. Mr. Hoskins.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Vice Chairman Ramsey, members of the board, Superintendent Booker. Each of you should have in front of you our Superintendent's Budget Request for 2017, 2018. We've been talking about this for the last couple meetings, and we've had some handouts with some recommended budgeted items in there. And there's been no material changes in the information that we've provided you in the past. Just an update on the, on the budget calendar. Right now, we're at April 10th, we're presenting the Superintendent's Budget to you. The next item will be on May 1st, in which this will be an action item for the Board of Education, so that we can approve the Gaston County School Budget and deliver it to the Board of Education by May 15th, which is required by state law. After we deliver the budget to the county commissioners, we'll essentially be waiting on the county commissioners to approve their local budget. In the same time, the General Assembly will be working to approve their budget. However, prior to June 30th, which I think, right now, June 19th is the scheduled meeting for June, we will ask you to adopt a balanced interim budget. We do that every year prior to the actual approval of the final budget resolution. State update, really, since we talked on, I think it was March 20th, there's not been any significant changes. Last meeting, we mentioned that the governor's budget has come out, recommended salary increases of 5% a year for teachers, stipends of $150 for teachers, salary increase of 2% or $800, whichever's greater, for our classified and central office personnel. However, we are still waiting on the Senate to, to approve or release their budget. That's expected sometime later this month. I think originally they said mid-April, so we should be getting pretty close. And after that, we expect the House to release their budget. And then after we get both of those, they'll go through a reconciliation period. This will be a biennium budget. So every couple years, they do this, or every two years they do this. And it usually takes a little bit longer when it's the first year of a biennium budget. The main thing that we're talking about today is the local operating budget. And that really has three components. First of all, the existing operating budget, that'd be the current budget that we have right now, and we adjust that for certain changes in personnel and programs. Secondly, will be new funding, which primarily is made up of two items, and that's ongoing operations or funds needed for ongoing operations, and then funds needed for new initiatives. And then finally, we do provide some funds from our fund balance to help balance our local request. So when we look at new funding requests, that consists of two items, ongoing expenditures. This is the cost of continuing operations in the same manner that they are operating right now. So as, as you know, with any household, you have inflationary adjustments, you have changes in laws that cause additional, additional expenditures, you have items that wear out and have to be replaced. That's what's included in ongoing expenditures. New initiatives, that would include the items that we've talked about and we've surveyed our stakeholders on what they believe we should be funding to help support our mission, and also items that are required by law. So starting with our ongoing expenditures, there's two of those that are included in this budget. They total $471,000. And that would include state mandated increases in employer-provided benefits, and also replacement of end-of-life mobile devices. So when we look at the state mandated increase in employer benefits, that's going to cost us $192,000. And these, there's two items that make this up. First of all, it's your health insurance premium, which is paid by us on behalf of the, of the employees, and also the employer retirement contribution. As you know, every employee, every full-time employee puts in 6% of their salary for their retirement. We put in about 17%. So both of these increases that we are proposing for next year are consistent with the increases that we had this year. The second item is replacing end-of-life Chromebooks, $279,000. We currently anticipate about 1,700 new, or devices will reach the end of life and will have to be replaced. The cost of a device is about $160 apiece. However, these devices tend to last about three years. And so we're really about two years into this. So the big expense for this will come, not next year, but the two years after that. We'll probably need to replace about 10,000 devices each year for the next two years. Because you can see, we've got 22,000 Chromebooks right now. So this again is just staying where we are today. The new initiatives, we developed this, again, based on the information, or partly based on the information that we received in the budget questionnaire that went out back in January, if you remember, we've talked about that. The top four items on So it's a small percentage, but it helps us to be more competitive against other school districts. And if you look at, take a step back and look at what this board has done over the past three years, along with the county commissioners, you know, three years ago, you know, we talked about this, and this board approved a $180,000 increase in our teacher supplements, or certified supplements. This, I believe, was funded by the county commissioners. The next year, the school board stepped out and increased the salary supplements by $1 million, and that was not funded by the county commissioners. We funded this with our fund balance. And then fortunately, the next year, which is the current year that we're in, the county commissioners gave us the $1 million from the previous year, plus another half a million dollars, which we're using for this year. In the bottom chart there, you can see how much that means on a per-person basis. And then this next chart here shows the cumulative effects of the last three years of what we've been working on. And we've increased certified salary supplements by almost $1.7 million, which is about $622 per person on average. However, when you look at where we are compared to our peer group, we still rank near the bottom. And this chart right here is as of 2015-16, so it did not include the effects of the most recent increase in our salary supplement. So if you added that to that 2,418, we would be at 2,603. So we would still step up one, assuming none of the others moved, which usually they are. So we're still down near the bottom, and that's our neighboring counties, and these are similar-sized school districts. And you can see, again, we're lagging near the bottom. However, what we're asking for is a $500,000 increase this year, as well as the next two years. That would be a total of $1.5 million. That would put us at about 3,158 on the salary supplement, which you can see will, again, will still be down near the bottom, but will be more competitive, especially when you look at our neighboring school districts. It'd put us right about in the middle. The next initiative that we are asking for is $685,000 for a classified salary adjustment. That's a 3% salary adjustment for our classified workers. Those are bus drivers, cafeteria workers, central office personnel. And you probably recall, since 2008, 2009, there was a salary freeze on a lot of these classified positions for a number of years. Last year, the state did provide a 1.5% salary increase for classified employees. However, we're asking for the county to support a 3% increase. Again, it's a competitive issue. It makes it more difficult to keep employees. And when you have a higher employee turnover, you spend more money in recruiting and training than you would otherwise. Yes, sir.
Yes, yes, sir, it would.
The next item is additional school choice options, $100,000. Dr. Boultonite and her team have done a good job of leveraging the new Pleasant Ridge Elementary School in reducing the cost of adding that gifted and talented academy at Pleasant Ridge. You'll recall, we spent a lot more money doing Hawx Nest, because we had to do all those renovations. But since Pleasant Ridge will be a new school, a lot of that expense is already included in the project, in the building of the school. Also, we will be starting a virtual academy for our middle school students. Hopefully, we'll be attracting, by offering more choices, we'll be attracting students from other, from outside our public schools, whether they're homeschool, private school, or charter school. And that's one of our goals, is to try to have enough choices, so that we have a program that fits your child. Another new initiative, technology is always one of the top priorities when it comes to how we should be funding our school system. This $1.9 million would purchase another 8,800 devices, which we would need in order to get to a one-to-one student-to-mobile-device ratio. This is a recommendation of DPI. It's a goal of DPI. A lot of people are trying to move towards that, but it is, it is an expensive proposition. And finally, some professional development, or additional professional development for our K-8 teachers, focusing on reading and writing. We believe that strengthening those, our students in those particular areas will help make them more successful as they move into high school and graduate.
And members of the board, the book you have, if you look behind tab C, Operating Request, on C1 and C2 is a summary of everything that Mr. Hoskins just spoke to you in his presentation, and that is followed by how those increases are budgeted in the proposal.
Finally, we have state-mandated new initiatives, and we've talked about this several meetings. This is the state-mandated K-3 class size reduction. We have projected here $4.8 million in order to maintain our operations the way they are now. The big challenge is that is this new change in the law would take us from having maximum class sizes of 24 students for kindergarten, first grade, second grade, and third grade, which we currently have, to 21, 19, and 20 for next year. So those reductions are going to result in the need for additional teachers, additional facilities, additional supplies. And certainly, one of the challenges, challenges will be that there's already a limited market for qualified K-3 teachers. Yes, sir.
Mr. Booker, has there been any change? I know that bill has went through the House, but is still in Senate and Committee?
At this time, it hasn't even been assigned to a committee. So the Senate has been reviewing proposals. We have had discussions with Senator Harrington. I know Ms. Chair, you spent an extended period of time with her one day last week, trying to talk about where we are. The good news for the board, and Mr. Devin, you reviewed that long form that we had to submit. Their own state budget, people are saying Gaston County has done what we were asked to do when we were given the money two years ago. That's why we're saying, well, why are we struggling so much to figure out how to meet this reduced class size?
Mr. Collier, have you received any information back from our county commissioners, and the letter that you sent them about? Because we need to make sure they know about this, because we're asking, there'll be a tremendous upflow of our budget asking money from them.
Just some conversations with the commissioners, that they've sent emails and reached out to our legislatures. They didn't say whether they had any positive feedback from those people, but they, several of them did reach out on behalf of our board.
One more thing, Mr. Booker, it's like the, Mr. Hoskins said, the State Department recommends that we go to one-to-one with Chromebooks. That's a funded mandate that we, they just ask us to do all these things, but they don't ever ask us, or ever give us any money to do them. So I hope everybody realizes that at home, and, you know, in our county, that, you know, they just continue to ask us to do stuff, but don't give any money with it.
That is an accurate statement, sir.
So our summary of what we're asking for, last year, we asked the county, or our local funding was $53.9 million proposed. This year, $58.1 million. That's a $4.2 million difference. So the big difference is the K-8 class size reduction, which is $4.8 million. So without that, we would actually be requesting less money this year than last year.
And the clarification, to make sure you see there, is you were actually funded at $47 million. So you've been, your request has not been fully funded. But it's our obligation, as we bring to you what we believe we need to run the Gaston County schools.
And our capital request, you know, we talked a little bit about the items that includes capital, obviously roofing, HVAC, plumbing, electrical, et cetera. Over 37% of our buildings are 40 years old or older, so we do have some aging facilities. So our maintenance needs are great. We have about 5 million square feet of school and office space. Last year, if you'll recall, and really, the last number of years, we received $1,227,000 in capital outlay from the county. That's right at 25 cents per square foot. However, we are requesting 5.9 million in capital, and that's about $1.16 per square foot. And when you look at, this is from the Council of the Great City Schools, October of last year. When you look at the school systems that they have surveyed, and this is a nationwide survey, the lower quartile is at 95 cents per square foot. The median is at $1.24 per square foot. So we're asking between the lower quartile and the median, even though I think we should be probably between the median and the high, given the age of our facilities. And just to, you know, recognize the fact that the county did sell $55 million in bonds for us to replace three elementary schools with a new elementary school, and to replace an older middle school with a new middle school, that will help us with our, lower our maintenance costs. And we do have $40 million of unissued school bonds that will expire in November 2017. We need the county to approve the issuance of those bonds, so that we can use those funds to address many of the capital needs in our district. That is all I have, Mr. Chairman.
And if I may add, before we get into your clarifying question, I want to walk you through the documents you have. And you all traditionally instruct us to post this online, and it will be, and we have historical years' budget. What you try to do in this document is you provide a great overview of how the district is being operated, and in your requests. If I could, under your first tab, the overview, if you would look at page A16. So A16 is the average daily membership. That is your student enrollment. So this is given to us by the Department of Public Instruction, and they say, this is what we anticipate your enrollment to be next year. So they project us to be basically flat with this current year. And on the preceding page, shows you what our enrollment currently was by the state, $31,499. They're projecting $31,527. If you flip over, we provide you the state allotment formulas and projections. So when they're coming back, they are going to take and say, well, Gaston County will have 2,377 kindergarten children. They will take this formula and say, we will allot them, that number divided by 18, and that's how many teachers we'll get. And they allot us by line item. So that is how it works. Then the next page shows you other allotment formulas that come. You do not qualify for a lot of those, but you see, we try to disclose every funding source that you have in here. So when folks ask you, are you transparent with your budget? You have been doing this back, I know, since 2009, when I got here, and we've been winning awards for our program for over 20 years. You disclose where all your funding sources are, as well as your expenditures, because that's what comes on the next pages. And then, if I could direct you to tab C again, and go to page C8. This summarizes for you your request. And one of the things that, when Mr. Hoskins joined the organization, we talked about ongoing and new costs, so that you could differentiate between what you were trying to do. This year, we added the red line there to talk about the class size change, so that you could see the separation in that discussion. And then the pages behind it, C9 through C16, each one of the requests shows you not only this year's request, but what we should be planning for, for the next two years. Again, part of our projections is to be open with what something costs. Is it a one-time cost, or is it an ongoing cost? And it just lays that out for you. And it gives you a background and discussion point for it. So if you're asked, and for example, when you get on page C12, it lays out what we're trying to accomplish with the virtual and gifted-talented academies, just a paragraph on each of those. So this is part of when people ask you, how do you go about your budgeting process? Each of the staff are required to do this by department as it comes forward. Mr. Hoskins' team reviews it, and then comes into Cabinet for review. For example, on all the allotment, there was a four-hour meeting last week, talking about how will allot? And that meeting was preceded by two days of work by Academic Services, getting it so that it could be reviewed by a group of your executive team. So a lot of work goes to get you to this point and allows that information. So that's why we present it tonight. You get beginning questions, and then we'll give all the clarifying questions. It'll be posted online within the next two days, so that the community can look and always submit questions to the at-superintendent that you all can have for discussion purposes. No, sir, thank you. Questions or comments?
I have one, Mr. Hoskins. And I forgot what slide it was on, and I'm just doing this from memory. The fund balance looked awful thin in next year's budget. It was just over a million dollars, I think.
Our fund balance is about $4.3 million, or it was at the end of last year. We expect it to be at that level, or maybe a little bit higher at the end of this year. And our budget, we are putting in $1.2 million of fund balance to balance the needs for this particular budget.
Okay, thank you. That was the, that was my question. I saw the 1-point-something million dollars in fund balance. That's what we're doing in order to meet this budget.
Yes.
Out of fund balance, okay. Mr. Dedman.
Mr. Hoskins, what is normal, what is a normal fund balance for a system our size?
We are around 2.3%. And I think when we looked at where we were at the end of last year, the average was about 2.5% for other similar sizes. So, yeah, there's four or five above that, four or five below that, but the average was around 2.5, and we were around 2.3.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions or comments?
I know this reflects a lot of information for you to get. It goes back to your board retreat. You gave us feedback on initiatives we were proposing, so we've carried those through into this budget. I know you all have been working on some other items that you may say, well, I'd like to see us look at this. So this is your opportunity to absorb, and over the next several weeks, we can then come back. But staff will be available to further clarify any questions you may have. We appreciate your attention and giving us the opportunity to present this to you.
I'd like to thank Mr. Hoskins. This is really presented in a very concise, easy-to-understand way, and I'm sure that our public, when they see it online, will be able to understand it too. And should any of the public have a question, Mr. Booker, they also, we allow the call our county office people?
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Hoskins, thank you very much. All right, that brings us to our next item, the calendar update. Mr. Booker.
Thank you, members of the board. We have survived, we believe, the weather for this year. And your calendar prescribed a number of days. You know that we were out of school on January 9th. We were also out of school on January 10th. The January 9th day was made up on January 24th. Prior to that 24th, you also had a two-hour delay on January 11th. So in that three-day window, we occurred those. So you now have one day that we deem still needs to be made up for students. And your makeup day would be April 21st by the calendar that was adopted. That is next Friday, the last day of spring break.
Mr. Dedman.
Mr. Booker, do we have enough hours to take away that day if we need to?
Yes, sir. Prior to that 24th, you also had a two-hour delay on January 11th. So in that three-day window, we occurred those. So you now have one day that we deem still needs to be made up for students, and your makeup day would be April 21st by the calendar that was adopted. That is next Friday, the last day of spring break.
Mr. Dedman.
Mr. Booker, do we have enough hours to take away that day if we need to?
Yes, sir. The calendar that you adopt gives us some flexibility, and we do have adequate hours that you could forgive the two-hour delay, as well as that one snow day.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we utilize our hours to make up January 10th and the 11th, in lieu of making up the scheduled day on the 21st of April.
Okay, a motion by Mr. Dedman, and I saw Mr. Ushery raise his hand first as a second. Any questions or discussion? With none, all those in favor show by raising your hand, and that's unanimous.
And I appreciate everyone's patience with that. You know that we saw snow in the mountains last week, so it is one that we didn't delay on that, but I think everyone knew what we were trying to work for, and I appreciate the questions you all have presented, making sure we were paying attention to that as we got to tonight.
All right, our next agenda item is the consent agenda. This is an action item. I'll need a motion. A motion by Mr. Dedman, a second by Ms. Cherry. Any questions or comments about the consent agenda? Seeing none, all those in favor show by raising your hand, and that's unanimous. That brings us to the superintendent's comments. Mr. Booker.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As you all know, it is spring break starting next week, and I know everyone is looking forward to it. I wanted to remind everybody, this Friday is a holiday for students, employees, and all schools and offices will be closed to recognize Friday. And then next week, our central office buildings will be open, and the students do not return until Monday, April 24th. It will be hard to believe that when they return, there will be 33 days of school left. It'll be a busy time for everyone, because we'll begin testing, preparing for graduation, recognition programs, those other things that get ready for the end of the year. When you start out back in August, it's hard to believe it gets to this point. I wanted to thank those who were able to make the Star Teacher, Star Student Award Ceremony last Thursday at the Shield Museum. It was a phenomenal program, and just also an emotional program to watch our educators get recognized for the great work that goes on in their classroom. To hear those students share how their lives have been impacted was very moving. We appreciate that the Gazette continues to serve as a partner sponsor for us. I'm sure some of you were able to see our Students at Work Day. We wanted to thank the 27 businesses and organizations that opened their doors up for more than 2,300 eighth graders on March 29th. That's all of our eighth graders from the 11 middle schools were given an opportunity to visit a local business or organization, so that they could begin to understand the career opportunities that are right here in their own community. We want to make sure that everybody knows our Career and Technical Education Department. There was one individual that slept really well that night, and that is your Director of CTE. Brett was very excited to say, Mr. Booker, this is Mr. Buchanan. All the buses are parked, and all the kids are where they're supposed to be. But we also, it's a great partnership with the Gaston Regional Chamber and all this coordination that goes on with our school leadership, so I wanted to thank that. Wanted to remind everybody, we're accepting applications for both of our magnet schools, the STEAM Magnet and the Gifted and Talented Academy. So that application is out there online. It is open to all individuals. As you've been watching this scroll across, both of them just happened to come, so it's on our website. And that cutoff for that is 5:00 PM on Monday, May 15th. So, Mr. Chairman, that concludes my comments. I look forward to everyone getting a good break and coming back energized on the 24th. We've still got three days to get through this week, and I would like to point out that it's April 10th. Graduation is exactly two months from today. Thank you, sir.
Hold on just a second. We had a birthday last week. Mr. Moore, we have the famous sheet cake in honor of that back there, so when everybody gets through, he gets to take home all that's left over. So happy birthday, Mr. Moore, belated at this point. And for those who are traveling during spring break, we wish you safe travels and safe returns. And with that, Mr. Dedman.
I'd like to make a motion that we adjourn.
Motion by Mr. Dedman, second by Ms. Cherry. All those in favor show by raising your hand, and we are adjourned.